Okay, Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee. We're here for fiscal year 2020 budget for the Health Department. Before we get started, I'm Councilman Erin Costello from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined by Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton from the 6th District, Member of the Committee.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Shannon Snead from the 13th District, Member of the Committee. To my immediate right is Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee. We have Rebecca Tab Simmons from the Office of Council President Brandon Scott with us. And we have Jeff Amoros representing Mayor Jack Young. Commissioner Girazza, take it away. If you could keep your presentation to about 10 minutes. Before you begin, if you could kindly introduce your whole crew, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yes, will do. Good morning. Chairman Costello, Council President Representative, and other members of the Budget Committee, as well as other members of City Council, thank you for your interest in the fiscal year 2020 budget request for the Baltimore City Health Department. My name is Letitia Girazza, and I'm pleased to present $160.5 million budget for the department that makes good on our collective commitment to provide for a healthier community where all Baltimoreans can thrive. Before I begin, I want to acknowledge and thank the members of my team who've done an outstanding job in supporting my transition into the role of Commissioner of Health. Daily, my team at the Health Department demonstrates a steadfast commitment to the mission of the department and the residents of Baltimore City. Joining me today is Deputy Commissioner for Youth Wellness and Community Health, Marybeth Haller. Deputy Commissioner for Aging and Care Services, Hyung Tan. Our Deputy Commissioner for Population Health and Disease Prevention, Jennifer Martin, could not join us this morning, but in her place, Dr. Adina Greenbaum, Assistant Commissioner for Clinical Services. Malcolm Haynes, Chief of Staff and Chief Financial Officer. Dr. Shelley Chu, behind me, our Chief Medical Officer. Kelly Eastman, Interim Deputy Chief of Staff. And DePaul Nibber, Director of Legislative Affairs. I'm also joined by a number of other key members of the Health Department Leadership Team, and while I cannot call them out by name, I do ask that they stand and be acknowledged as well.
And Commissioner, sorry, we've been joined by Councilman Yitzhak Schleifer, 5th District, Member of the Committee. Commissioner, I didn't realize how long the presentation is, so let's make it 20 minutes. That's, I mean, you guys have a lot of stuff going on there.
Okay, thank you.
A lot of good stuff that we want to hear about. We've also been joined by Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District.
Yes, good morning. Lastly, I'd like to acknowledge a few members of the Baltimore City Commission on Aging who are here to show their vote of support for the work that the Health Department is doing in the city and for our older adult population. Thank you all for being here. So the Baltimore City Health Department's fiscal 2020 budget will enable our department to accomplish the goal of protecting the health of city residents through targeted initiatives. It will also help us to simultaneously build on a number of successes from the past year, and it would be remiss of me not to share with you some of our key accomplishments over the past 12 months. As you may recall, last year, the Health Department was recognized by the National Association of City and County Health Officials as the Local Health Department of the Year for our outstanding achievements in demonstrating innovative ways to improve public health and safety. Similarly impressive, we celebrated the tireless work of our department and our program partners who administer the Vision for Baltimore program as we deliver the program's 5,000th pair of glasses. Admittedly less visible, but equally as important, our clinical staff has developed an innovative service delivery model by establishing a mobile buprenorphine clinic on our spot van, which has expanded our ability to treat Baltimoreans suffering from substance use disorder. To date, our mobile van has served over 200 residents suffering from substance use disorder. The department has also recently received funding from the Weinberg Foundation to create a connected ecosystem for older adults in Baltimore City. I'm also pleased to announce that just this week, Baltimore City was chosen as one of the first of three jurisdictions nationwide to receive funding for the new Ending the HIV Epidemic Plan led by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. While we always enjoy the opportunity to bask in our successes, reducing health disparities primarily by optimizing the effectiveness of our services remains the department's top priority. This budget reflects our intent to respond to public health challenges through education, advocacy, and direct service delivery. Because public health challenges are continually evolving, they require our team to be agile in developing new means for improving health outcomes in Baltimore. While approximately 75% of our budget is funded by federal, state, and local philanthropic sources, we are extremely grateful for the ongoing local support that allows the department to effectively meet countless public health challenges facing our city. The general funds we receive allow us to support programs and meet public health needs that might otherwise go unmet. For instance, our general fund appropriation serves as the matching component for our federally-funded Ryan White Program. This crucial funding is used to treat and provide services for individuals living with HIV across the city. City general funds also enable us to effectively respond to other communicable diseases like measles. The recent response to measles cases initiated by the Health Department in conjunction with local and state partners included education and outreach to the community, as well as vaccination clinics, all of which were supported or made possible by the support of general funds. The operating budget consists of 18 unique services, with each program supported by this budget meeting the varied needs of the residents of Baltimore City. Despite the variety of our program offerings, our aim is constantly to identify opportunities for cross-functional collaboration within our agency and externally in order to enhance, amplify, and broaden our services and our messaging. The following are just a few highlights from the upcoming fiscal year 2020 budget. The Health Department plans to continue its commitment to provide any clinical services to Baltimore City Public Schools through a $12.4 million appropriation to support our school health suites. We will also continue to strengthen our response to the opioid epidemic through the creation of the Director of Opioid Overdose Prevention position in the General Fund. We've allocated $250,000 to modernize our environmental health programs and cover costs related to the relocation of the Office of Animal Control and Barks. We've held programs related to services for our older adults exempt from general fund reductions to protect this vulnerable population. As the Area Agency on Aging for Baltimore City, the Health Department coordinates funds and advocates for services for older adults. These efforts, these efforts enable older Baltimoreans to continue to live independently and with dignity in their homes and communities. We do all of this work on roughly $2 million in general fund support. The importance of general fund support for our programs and services cannot be understated. At the department, our approach is to apply evidence-based interventions to our city's public health challenges, and despite the seemingly contrasting nature of our services and programs, our service delivery model is best understood using a lifecycle continuum perspective. We provide services and care for the youngest Baltimoreans all the way up through our oldest residents. You already have much of the budget details around our requests, so I wanted to take some additional time to highlight additional key program offerings using the care continuum as our guide. The first service offering we'll review is maternal and child health, or Service 308. Maternal and child health, this particular area of our budget supports programs and services within our Bureau of Maternal Child Health and works towards a goal of improving health outcomes for expectant mothers, infants, and toddlers throughout the city. Programs under this service promote positive birth outcomes, including a nurse home visiting program, services to infants and toddlers identified with developmental delays, nutrition support, family planning services, and infant and child fatality review. The recommended budget also includes funding for the You Choose program. The program uses some federal dados to educate youth and prevent teen pregnancy. Through programs like this, Baltimore has seen more than 40% decrease in the teen birth rate in recent years. We'll next discuss Service 310, or our School Health Services. This part of our budget helps us support and coordinate efforts to deliver care to health suites and school-based health centers for students enrolled in Baltimore City Public Schools. This year marks the third year that we've provided bridge funding to city schools in the amount of $12.4 million for school health services. Typically, city schools is responsible for covering these costs, but for the past three years, those costs have been underwritten by the city's general fund. This service provides delivery and coordination of health services and health suites and school-based health centers to more than 84,000 students enrolled in Baltimore City Public Schools. Our priorities include early nursing intervention in elementary schools, skilled nursing management for children with special health needs, mandated screening for hearing and vision impairments, mandated immunizations, health case management, and coordination with other services, including primary care, mental health, and substance abuse services. We'll next look at Service 316, or Youth and Trauma Services. This particular line item supports victims and survivors of trauma by providing culturally-sensitive and trauma-responsive services. This team focuses on positively impacting the outcomes of victims of crime on an individual, family, and systems-based level. The services emphasize community-based programs that support individuals in navigating mental health and substance use disorders, victim and survivor services, unfamiliar criminal justice system processes, emotional and psychological support, and connections to wraparound services. This service is leveraged with several large grants from the Department of Justice and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. This service also conducts citywide trauma trainings and violence prevention programs in city schools. We believe this work is critical to breaking the cycle of violence in Baltimore City. We'll next look at Environmental Inspection, or Service 717. Our Environmental Inspection Services is one of the very few services in the department that is not funded by grants. EIS is a public-facing service which handles everything from 311 noise complaints to food service facility inspections. EIS staff work directly with constituents and the business community, balancing the needs of both. Our aim is to support business owners in realizing their goals while helping them to remain compliant with laws and regulations critical to protecting public health. We recognize the important role they play as economic drivers towards Baltimore's success. We'll next look at Clinical Services, or Service 303. This service line supports operations in our two health clinics located at 620 East North Caroline Street, or East Caroline Street, and 1515 West North Avenue. Our clinics enable Baltimoreans to access preventative healthcare, chronic disease management, and direct treatment. Our clinics also serve as a community safety net, providing immunizations, family planning care, and treatment for HIV and other STDs. This service employs a combination of health department-based clinicians, as well as contracted staff, to provide care for over 10,000 residents annually. We'll next look at Service 315, or Emergency Services. This service is home to our Office of Acute Communicable Diseases and our Office of Public Health Preparedness and Response. These two offices work in tandem to investigate and subsequently respond to public health emergencies and suppress the rapid spread of the disease in Baltimore. I will point out again that funds appropriated to this service directly supported our recent efforts to respond to measles cases discovered in the Baltimore area earlier this spring. Our team was able to rapidly deploy resources and sand up two community immunization clinics that we feel have helped to suppress the potential spread of measles. We'll next look at Service 721, or our Senior Centers. One of the unique aspects of the Health Department as the local area agency on aging is that we directly operate a total of six senior centers and provide programming support and funding to an additional seven senior centers that are operated by our nonprofit partners. Senior centers serve as the hub to many of our communities, and I'm proud of the work that we do to provide quality programming and access to services that allow older Baltimoreans to age in place. Lastly, we'll look at Service 723, or Advocacy for Seniors. This line of service in many ways provides support to some of the most vulnerable people that our department serves. While our primary goal is to enable older adults to age in place, sometimes meeting that goal isn't possible, in which case it becomes the responsibility of the department to ensure that individuals living in long-term care facilities have a voice and remain well-cared-for. Among other things within this service, the Long-Term Care Ambulance Man investigates resident complaints against assisted living facilities and nursing homes. The team supporting this line of service does very critical work in support of older Baltimoreans with somewhat limited operating resources. In closing, I'm proud to take the helm of such an accomplished organization and to have the opportunity to begin to build upon past successes. I'm eager to further advance agency priorities and continue to improve health outcomes and decrease health disparities in Baltimore. Looking ahead, my goal is to make rapid progress in achieving the administration's health and wellness priorities, stemming the obesity epidemic through education and greater access to healthy foods, preventing youth violence, and addressing the effects of violence exposure through development and implementation of trauma-informed care strategies, combating the opioid crisis through continued use and expansion of the Hub and Spokes Model, and improving our service delivery and agency operations through greater incorporation of a technology in our day-to-day work processes while also leveraging data to inform our decision-making. By advancing the priorities of the Health Department, we will make significant strides in improving health within our community. We will continue to protect the health of our residents and work towards reducing health disparities across the city. We will carry out this work through an equity lens while maintaining the highest level of productivity and professionalism. Thank you all for your time, and we appreciate your consideration of this budget. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you, Commissioner. We've been joined by Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District, Councilman Zeke Cohen from the 1st District, Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District, and Councilman Robert Stokes from the 12th District, Member of the Committee, who stepped, no, not Member of the Committee, sorry, long week, who just stepped out. Commissioner, we are absolutely thrilled to have you.
Thank you.
In Baltimore, it's been a pleasure to work with you in the short few months that you've been here, but to have someone of your caliber heading up the Health Department is just fantastic. We've also been joined by Council President Brandon Scott. Commissioner, the Health Administration Service has $8 million in unallocated grants for Health Department administration. Can you talk about what grants you're expecting to receive and how these will be spent?
Yes, so I'll talk briefly, then I'll hand it over to our Chief Financial Officer, but we did set aside $8 million in anticipation of potential awards, so I did mention one, the Ending the HIV Epidemic Grant that will be coming our way from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. So we set aside that as a potential allocation for future grants that may come in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for our unallocated grant budget in Service 715, our strategy for formulating our budget because this city's annual operating budget doesn't align with many of our, many of our grant budgets, is that we level fund all of our, all of our grants that we receive in the Health Department. So when it comes time for our various programs to formulate their budget, we don't really know what the budget level for each of those various grant streams will be. So essentially, we allow additional room in our Service 715 to allow for increases in grant awards, so that is most of what's reflected in there, in addition to some additional grants that we're anticipating.
Thank you. Marybeth, can you talk about the number of food facility inspectors that we have on staff?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I can. We currently have 14 food facility inspectors on staff. We will be fully staffed, I believe, next week. The candidate has been selected, so we have 14. This is an increase of two over the past two years.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for asking my first question. Madam Commissioner, thank you, and thank you for all your hard work, and thank you for being here with us this morning. As you know, the city is in the first year of the implementation of my Equity Assessment Program. Just have a few questions about the check to department status. So has the department identified an equity coordinator?
Yes, we have. Kelsey Johnson, who is also my Special Assistant, will serve as our Equity Coordinator.
Is Kelsey here today?
She is not here today.
Okay, great. So that takes out the second question because it directly reports to you. Have you guys scheduled any trainings for the department as far as equity is concerned as of yet?
So in the past year, a lot of our folks in the Division of Maternal and Child Health have done Undoing Racism training, and the senior leadership team also underwent training last year as well.
Thank you, thank you, and more to come. And the last thing, has the department started working on your baseline equity analysis of everything the department does that is due to the council on October the 17th?
So what we have done is we are currently reviewing policies as a part of our national accreditation process, and as we review and update our policies, we're looking at them with a health equity lens. Likewise, I do want to highlight that equity is really an essential and core principle of the Health Department, and a lot of our programs support the notion of equity, thinking about our Child Fatality Review Board, our Infant Mortality Review Board. Those specifically look at factors such as race and socioeconomic status and how that relates and contributes to the cause of death, and we make recommendations. It's a council that is multidisciplinary, so the State's Attorney's Office is there, DOJ is there, DSS is there, and that committee makes recommendations to local agencies on how we can better address those disparities. Additionally, we capture a lot of data, and in our data, we're always looking at potential trends and looking at disparities in health outcomes as it relates to race, as well as socioeconomic status. I think we also really try to design and drive our programs to address those patients whose needs are at risk of not being met. So our older adults, the programs we do to support them is an example. Certainly, a lot of the work we do with our Title X funding around reproductive health services is another example. A lot of the women who receive reproductive health services are women of color who may not otherwise obtain services were it not for this grant funding.
Thank you, and thank you to the Health Department for being a leader in the city as far as implementing equity. I wish that some of your other agency heads would follow your lead and plan and lead. My next question is about Service 307, Substance Use Disorder and Mental Health. In fiscal '18, 34,000 clients received substance abuse disorder services. Do you know or have an estimation of what the total need is in the city for this service?
So I don't know the exact need. There was a gap analysis performed by one of our partners, Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore, in 2016 that looked at how many residents that maybe had an unmet need that had substance use disorder, and they came up with general estimates, and I can certainly try to provide that report for you if that be helpful.
Mr. Amoros, yes, if we can get us a copy of the report. And also, how do you guys define services? So break, walk us through that a little bit.
Yeah, so I mean, I'll start, and then I may turn it over to our new Director of Opioid Overdose Prevention, but a lot of what we do is coordinating care. So for us, we've done the naloxone trainings. A lot of what I'll focus on is expansion of the Hub and Spokes Model, so the Health Department really serves as a convener to help advance policy and advocacy around substance use disorder. So we lead the Fentanyl Review Task Force, so specifically similar to our Child Fatality Review. We're looking at the trends in deaths across the city related to fentanyl, and we make recommendations. This is another interdisciplinary task force, including law enforcement, as well as Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore, who is our partner in this work as the local behavioral health authority.
Thank you. And how do you guys track the outcomes as it relates to this service? Like, what are you looking to see? What are the results that you're looking to see and track? And tell us about whether you think you're missing the mark, what can help you to make the mark, resources, help from other agencies?
Yeah, so I mean, ideally, certainly, we want to look at fatalities. So we look at both fatality data, which sometimes lags behind its cause of death. So if the cause of death is related to an opioid overdose, we get results from the Office of Chief Medical Examiners from the state, so we look at that data. We also look at non-fatal overdose data, so how many non-fatal overdoses are occurring across the city, and we want to see a decrease in both. So those are the things that we're tracking. I think, you know, one of the challenges that we have is data sharing. So we do receive the non-fatal overdose data from EMS, but it is their data that they own, so we look at trends and we make recommendations through the Fentanyl Task Force, but we don't necessarily share that information as public knowledge. So I think that can be a bit challenging when you're trying to implement changes if not everyone is on the same page about what the data is.
So you mean EMS, you mean the Fire Department?
Yes.
So you feel as though they can be more helpful and more transparent with sharing information with you guys?
So they share the data. I think the challenge is us being able to share outside of kind of our general partners in the Fentanyl Task Force. So we have a good relationship with Fire Department.
Yeah, what are the barriers to that?
So I mean, I think certainly as it relates to HIPAA, we want to make sure that we're protecting sensitive patient data, so I think, you know, we just have to do it in a way where it's more at an aggregate level so that it isn't specific and you can't necessarily identify a person.
Mr. Amoros, if we can add that, what number are we at, Mr. Amoros?
This will be 118.
118. If we can add 118, figuring out the way to word this, a meeting or discussion about how to more publicly share this sort of data?
Sure, and to clarify, you'd like that to be yourself and the Health Department, or yourself?
It can be my office, Councilman Burnett, and the Health Department.
Let me catch up with you. I'll log it for now, but I've been trying to do the meeting requests.
Yep.
Outside of this list, that way, these are more for long-term followers.
Fine, by me.
Sounds good.
Thank you. And my last one before I go to Councilman Burnett, Madam Commissioner, talk about my favorite health service, Health Inspections. In fiscal year '17, there were 295 repeat violators of food facility inspection. In fiscal year '18, that number jumped to 1,100. Do we know why there was such a huge spike in violent, violent, I mean, not violent, sorry, it's on my mind, in repeat offenders?
I will ask Deputy Commissioner Haller to maybe speak to that.
Thank you. Not only was there an increase in staffing, but they were having to handwrite inspections due to some system issues.
So we think the jump is because they were, okay, handwriting them. Thank you so much. And I think I know the answer to this question, but what are the barriers to completing a greater percentage of our food facility inspections that are mandated?
Well, we hope to see those numbers go up. One of the greatest barriers is that, as you're aware, there was a state audit several years ago, and based on the number of food facilities that we have, they recommended that we have as many as 38 inspectors. We have 14. So given that number, even if we were operating at absolute 100% efficiency, it would almost look like we don't get to half the number that we could. We try our best, we do prioritize, however, because restaurants are divided into risk categories based on the likelihood of foodborne illness. So we try to reach the highest-risk facilities first, moderate-risk, and then low-risk facilities we do last.
And Madam Deputy Commissioner, do you know, on average, how much revenue that a typical health inspector generates for the city?
In terms of revenue that they generate, our, our method of inspection is educational. We do not write a lot of citations to facility owners. If we find an issue, we teach them how to make the corrections. We've realized that small businesses in particular, small restaurants, these are economic drivers for our city. When we close a restaurant, that means the waitstaff may not make their rent. They're not going to get that money back, so we try and work as much as we can with each facility owner. If we find a facility does have repeat violations, in those cases, we would issue a citation. Even with that, they have an opportunity to go to the Environmental Control Board if it's their first time and have that mitigated. So I, I don't think in terms of how much we generate, because we don't, we wouldn't want to set them quotas under this educational system.
Thank you, and sorry for asking questions that you know I know the answer to. This is really more for finance and understand, and for the listening public, that the system is not punitive. It has never been that way. It's about making sure that people are eating healthy and safe foods. But for you, Mr. Amoros, and for the administration, have we, have you guys taken a hard look at this? Not to pick on a particular department, but this time last year, I was talking to you guys about not giving a certain agency $9 million for 100 new positions, for positions that that agency said that they couldn't hire. But we know that the Health Department would be able to hire these, these folks, and they will be able to meet their state-mandated goals if they were put in a position to staff up the department. This is a discussion that we've been having for several years, and while we've seen it increase, some is still not significant enough.
That's something that we can look at this summer and report back to you.
Thank you. Councilman Burnett, we've been joined by Councilman Bill Henry from the 4th District and Councilman Robert Stokes from the 12th District. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Madam Commissioner, for your hard work that you put in and have really hit the ground running. Really impressed and hearing great things about your leadership in the department, and also just want to thank your team and your staff for the great work. The Health Department is one of my favorite agencies, because, you know, we've been really talking about violence reduction in Baltimore for years, and I, and I believe that this department is central to that conversation, it has to be, moving forward, and hopefully we'll, moving forward, have budgets that really reflect a, that vision. Right now, you know, having only 30% of your budget coming from the city, I think, is not okay, and we will continue, I know, to push, and my colleagues will be pushing to really do a better job at getting more skin in the game from Baltimore City to address Baltimore City challenges. One of the things that stood out to me on that note is that Service 723 reflects just over around 1.2 million in cuts to senior advocacy programs. One of the things that, I live in a community that it's not uncommon to meet someone who's been in their house for 40 years, and so their ability to age in place is important to me, but also knowing that what happens as we, the boomer generation continues to retire, how do we really address that concern and meet their needs? And seeing that there are large cuts, look, seemingly from the state, but, you know, also a need to fill that gap on the city side. Can you talk about the impact that these cuts is having on the department's ability to support our older adults?
So I'll speak in generalities, and then I'll probably hand it over to Deputy Tan. So in general, those state funding cuts do affect our ability to serve seniors effectively. So we had significant cuts that will affect our ability to provide delivered meals to seniors, and that's something that's very tangible, and like you said, it's kind of fundamental to that senior being able to stay in their home and lead a healthy and balanced life. In general, the Health Department supports, you know, the residents from birth through the older adult, and as such, we're actually working on an updated aging strategy to figure out how to better support the needs of our older residents. I don't know if you want to add anything?
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Councilman, for that question. I just wanted to clarify, the question can be broken up into two ways. Service 723, the 1.2 million that you see in cuts, state cuts, actually is moved to Service Area 724. This year, we spent a lot of This year, we spent a lot of time looking at reorganizing the Division of Aging and Care Service as a whole. And the Senior Care Program was moved to 724 because it better aligns its overall program mission. In terms of the state cuts we received, it's not depicted in the city budget because we just received the state allocations for 2020 about three weeks ago. And the total cuts and state cuts is about $550,000. It is not seen in the budget, agency budget that you see here, because it was printed way before. The state cuts obviously impact our older adults significantly. Particularly the meal program. We estimated that we were unable to, with the state cuts, we were unable to deliver about 7,000 meals. 400 older adults that rely on meals each and every day.
Sorry, can you repeat, how many meals?
We estimated at the time, we were told that the cuts were about 300,000. And then when we received the full state and federal allocation, the cuts equated to about 550,000. And at that time, we were still estimating the amount of impact that it would make. So on average, it's about 400 older adults that would not receive a meal each day. We provide meals to about 5,000 older adults through our congregate and home-delivered meal programs each day. And so these are very vulnerable adults that rely on a nutritious meal each and every day. Fortunately, we've been able to kind of really look at how do we make sure that we maintain the same level of service with these cuts. I think one of the benefits of being part of a larger agency that can absorb some level of cuts, we've been able to really look at how to address that. And we are going to do everything we can to make sure that the folks that are still in our program receive meals. We're still trying to figure that out, but that is kind of where we are with the state cuts.
I mean, that's, you know, I think that's, again, sort of speaking to the need for greater investment here locally. 400 older adults not eating is, or the potential for that is a big deal. The second question I had, Madam Chair, relates to the opioid crisis. You already asked a number of questions around, or answered a number of questions around that. And I just wanted, once and kudos, I did see the Needle Exchange van in my district a few days back. I want to say two Fridays ago. So I'm on Frederick Avenue doing outreach. And any way we can continue to support that, we'd like to. But at, I think there were 798 opioid deaths just last year in Baltimore City. What would a fully funded effort from the Health Department look like? You know, if you, if the constraints weren't there, what are some strategies that if the funding was available, that the department would really either be able to implement new ideas or really build on? What would that look like for you, leading that department, to really address this concern?
Yeah, so I mean, I think one of the things that I'd like to focus on is something called a hub and spokes model. So this was a concept that originated in the state of Vermont, where there is typically a centralized location for treatment. Patients will start there, residents with substance use disorder would start there. And then once they're stable on a medicine called buprenorphine, so this is medication-assisted treatment, they would be referred out to the community. So the initial hub and then the spokes are primary care providers within the community. Internal medicine physicians, family physicians, who are comfortable prescribing buprenorphine and can also offer some wraparound support services with a nurse and a care coordinator in place. And subsequently can help those residents manage other chronic comorbid conditions. So we have one in the city right now through IBR Reach, but that's the only one in the city. And I know that they've received some federal support to be successful. So it's that nursing support and that care coordination that I think really helps with access to recovery services and wraparound services. So I'd have to maybe get back to you on a specific cost, but that's certainly the model that I would promote throughout the city.
And just a really quick follow-up. So either there's one center, how many would, do you think we actually need citywide? Or is that something that if you needed more time, we could?
Yeah, I'll take more time on that. So again, looking, there was a gap analysis that was done back in 2016 by Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore to understand the unmet needs of citizens in the city suffering from substance use disorder. So I'd have to look at that and determine, based on that number, how many we need.
Did you get that, Mr. Amheros? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Before we move to Councilman Cohen, I'd just like to piggyback on some comments or questions that Councilman Burnett had talked about. And that was, well, first of all, I also want to thank you, Commissioner, for stepping in and just moving, rolling your sleeves up and joining the Health Department team and just working hard to try to heal and help our city. I'd like some elaboration, basically, on some changes that I think the Commission of Aging, that whole department, I think if you just give a little history to our council members of some of the problems with that department office being moved to the Health Department. And, you know, we kind of feel that it has hurt the senior population in some way, to a certain extent. And we think that there really needs to be some more emphasis on trying to, our centers trying to be a more multi-generational type center. Also to, we're just not servicing the amount of older adults that we have in the city. And they are being traumatized and it's getting worse and worse. You know, it's kind of almost in a crisis situation. And we need some changes and help and attention. And I'd just like you to kind of talk about that and share, because we want to be advocates at these centers and also try to get more places. I know the Commission is really reformulating themselves and are, they are stronger as well. And we're probably going to hear more about them and of what they're going to be doing as we move forward. Just kind of have a discussion, because it is very important. And we want to get up to speed with our surrounding counties. And a lot of, one problem I do want to mention is that, you know, even the, we have different agencies doing different things for older adults, but there needs to be something that we can do to make it all come together for a one-stop shop. And just talk about that, and then we'll move to Councilman Cohen.
So I do want to reiterate what you said. So as a Health Department, we are committed really to helping older adults age in place. And we see our services, again, serving from birth through the end of life. So we value our seniors. We value the work that the senior centers are doing, sometimes on a limited budget, to provide programming and support. As such, the national model is actually moving for aging to be within the Health Department and really approach it through a public health and a health equity lens. So similar to how the Health Department is starting to address violence, aging in older adults. Similarly, public health is being called upon to better address that. I mentioned briefly the aging strategy that we are putting in place. I also mentioned kind of the aging ecosystem. So to your point about collaboration, so kind of creating this larger ecosystem where there is kind of one location where all older adults can come for resources. So we're working closely with United Way to figure out how do we create kind of that one-stop shop for all of our older adults' needs. Is there anything you wanted to add, Deputy Tan?
I sure can. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Councilwoman Middleton, not only for your question, but also for your service on the Commission on Aging. To add and provide a little bit of context and history, CARE, which was previously known as the Commission on Aging and Retirement Education Services, was an advisory board in addition to providing direct services. There's a lot of confusion that has occurred over the 10 years that has, since it's merged into the Health Department. I want to try to kind of define that. The Commission on Aging is an advisory board that serves the mayor and city council in terms of providing advocacy and advisement on the issues of older adults. The Aging Services, which we have about 24 programs or more within the city that we provide under the Health Department, are direct services. Before, 10 years ago, they were the two, the same entity. What we're trying to do is maintain aging services within the Health Department and support and elevate the Commission on Aging to be better, to support and advocate on behalf of older adults. I think as Sharon Middleton, Councilwoman Middleton, had referred, that the Commission is getting stronger as we are, as more members are being appointed. There are efforts on the city level to better collaborate and coordinate aging services. One is through the Commission on Aging, but also through the Interagency Committee on Aging that the mayor's office is in support of. We have all of the agency represented on a bi-monthly, on a bi-monthly schedule to come together and really address aging services as a collaborative. The other that the Commissioner focused on is our aging strategy, this 18-month process that we really undertook to really unearth what the issues are and what strategy and framework can we develop for older adults to help support the needs that they seek. I think when the Commission was in a standalone agency, I think it's really important that the city council remembers that it was running a $2 million deficit, mainly because it was unable to sustain itself through its state and federal grants. There are very rigid guidelines around these great funding, grant funding. And when it merged into the Health Department, we were able to better and build infrastructure for aging services as a whole. I don't know if there are other questions, but I just wanted to give that brief background in that there is a movement both on the city side as well as our nonprofit philanthropic network to help support older adults here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clark has a follow-up on this subject. And Councilman Cohen politely yield this time to her.
Well, we're going to take the two generational ends of the spectrum here. As you know very well, Dr. Tan, Ms. Director Tan, I totally support what my Vice President is talking about. I think you've done an admirable job. And I'm very pleased with the, that the administration, Jeff, has added the head of the Commission on Aging and Retirement Education to the mayor's cabinet. And where Director Tan is a regular attendant, which is great. That's a very small step, but an important one in the right direction. The fact of the matter is, this is not on the Health Department or on the Commission. It's on the mayor's office and the city council. We really need to work toward, what the argument is, and it's a good one. If we're embedded in the Health Department, if the Commission and senior programs are dispersed around, but embedded mainly in the Health Department, that's a department that has some money. So like when you get a cut from the state, over half a million dollars, there's some wiggle room to be able to try to compensate to some degree. That's the argument. And I understand that, and it's been told to me many times, and I understand it. But I can't accept it because, not tomorrow. I mean, we have now a seat at the table. We really ultimately need to recreate the Commission as a separate agency. And then there's that issue of, but where's the money when things get cut short? That's our job, that when that happens, there is the funding above and beyond the current percent of local funding to make it possible for that agency to be restored. It is symbolic of the concern and the respect of our senior citizens. And it's not just health. It's really career opportunities and the like. I mean, basically, people retire here. They leave wherever they are around in this region. And they come here to live in their retirement years because even though the transportation is terrible, there are a lot of services and a lot of attractions. And there are people. It's exciting. It's fun. And so I think it's important for us to signify through our Commission that that population is extremely important to us because it's a very productive population that needs some job retraining. People retire, they want to do something else. I'm going to retire in a year and a half. And I'm really interested in astronomy, to be honest with you. I think it's probably too late for me to learn enough to be in a career. But I'd like to know that there were, there was a place I could go to talk to people about how to, you know, change careers. And so I think a lot of people feel the same way. So I just say that in support of my colleague, who is very involved with the Commission. This is not over. This is beginning. But it has to, I think, ultimately end in a major part of our government speaking to people over the age of 60 and way beyond. And I think you're off to a very good start with the staff that you have and with the work that's being done. Absolutely. I'd take, I'd take our director and what, and our commission, and they're wonderful. And just move them up the ladder so what they do is seen as important by our population. Thank you.
Would you like to comment on that?
No.
It's not necessary.
It's not necessary. It's not going to happen in this budget hearing. But I would like to see this agency and CARE working toward that agency goal and preeminent goal among agencies.
Thank you. Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Commissioner. Want to begin by echoing a few of my colleagues' comments, that it's great to have you onboard. Really excited for what you bring to this agency and the focus on data and sort of managing, evaluating, and making sure that we are truly doing the things that we say we're going to do. And also appreciate your partnership so far on advancing work around youth trauma. That's critically important in a city that is experiencing unacceptable levels of violence, that we are supporting our young people and what they go through and providing safe spaces all across the city. So again, appreciate your partnership, Mr. Cilio, all the folks in your agency who are working with us on that policy. I did want to say that, you know, in looking at some of the line items that support both public health and public safety, so 316, Youth and Trauma Services, we're looking at about 2.4 million. 307, Substance Use Disorder and Mental Health. My colleague, Councilman Burnett, and President Scott, both touched on that. $4.6 million for fiscal 2020. And then I look at our budget for police, which runs approximately 536 million. So again, 2.4 on youth and trauma, 4.6 on substance use disorder, and then 536 for our police department. To me, that speaks to a profound disparity in how we are spending and thinking about our public health and our public safety. If we believe in a preventive approach that values the well-being of children and communities, then we should invest more into trauma services and supporting preventing substance use disorder. So given that we're only spending approximately $7 million on those two critically important line items, and to my colleague's earlier point, I'm going to assume only about 30% of that is actually city money, probably even less. of that is actually city money, probably even less. Could you speak, he asked about what it would look like to fully fund, or fully support substance use disorder. Could you speak to what it would look like to fully fund youth and trauma services, what a robust budget set of services could look like? Because again, when I think about the violence crisis that our young people are facing, when I think about the opioid crisis that our entire city has been facing, the amount of deaths from overdose, to me, $7 million for those two services is completely unacceptable and below what we should be spending.
Sure. So I'll, I'll talk about kind of what we've begun to look at internally as a department in terms of work that we're doing across divisions for trauma, and then I may have to get back to you on, on what it would cost to build out a more robust program. So as you know, Councilman Cohen, we do perform trauma-informed care trainings across the city, and since 2015, we've performed over 3,000 of those trainings. It includes city employees, it includes city schools, and we believe that in order for Baltimore City to really begin to address trauma, there really has to be kind of a city-wide, city-wide strategy, right? So, training across all civic agencies so that anyone at a civic agency who interacts with the public has that kind of mindset and that approach. So that would be a lot of training, if you think about all the city employees, but it would, I think, greatly impact, I think, how we as a city begin to look at and address trauma overall and its effects on our young people. So again, we've looked across a couple of our programs, and we do think that there is some possibility in training staff, which would, which would be at an additional cost since we're limited in terms of the number of trainers that we have. But we also think that this could be a part of a larger citywide youth strategy. So as we think about violence prevention, and as we think about means for stemming violence, I think we're, we're speaking a lot about youth, but what are, what are some alternatives, right? So just having kind of this larger citywide strategy for our youth, I think, will, will be important, and I think it'll be important for us to work with other partners who are doing work in this space. So Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore, I've mentioned, they do trauma-informed care. There are a lot of community-based organizations that are doing trauma-informed care. So I've met with them, we've talked about how do we, again, try to unify our approach, right? So we want to make sure that we're looking at outcomes and that everyone doing this work is looking at the same types of outcomes.
Great. Look forward to continuing that partnership. I would just, again, encourage for future years' budgets that you ask for more.
Okay.
Because, again, we can't keep saying we're a public health city, and we believe in prevention, and we believe in our kids and all the rest, and then have line items like 2.4 million for trauma services when we have myriad children that are deeply traumatized, have, as you've said in a hearing, multiple adverse childhood experiences and all the rest. But I do look forward to working with you and your staff on creating a policy specifically for our city agencies. My second question was, just sort of thinking about Baltimore as this place where we have some of the best hospitals and public health institutions really in the world, and yet have such profound health disparities. I'm wondering kind of how you think about how we can sort of work more collaboratively and less in silos? I think one of the real challenges in this town is there's really good work happening, but it's in pockets all over the place, and I think one, one space that your office can really add value is in being a deep connector and being the place where convening and all the rest is happening. Because what we see so often is there are various programs, there are various approaches, but there's not enough connectivity, there's not enough conversation across disciplines happening. And so I was hoping you could articulate some of the vision for how that work can happen.
Yeah, so, so two things I want to highlight. First is, as you mentioned, as a convener, one of the things that I've worked to do since I've got here is meet with different head of hospitals and understand what their challenges are, understand some of the programs they're doing, because a lot of times we're serving the same patients, so trying to figure out how we can deduplicate efforts, and where possible, share data around best practices. So still, still on tour, but, but meeting with lots of local hospital directors. Another piece of work that we're doing that I want to highlight is something called our accountable health communities. So we were awarded a grant through the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Innovation to build out a web-based platform that screened patients across the city. So this involves multiple hospital partners as well as some federally qualified health centers for their social needs. And after that screening, based on their risk stratification, they are navigated through a partner of ours, Healthcare Access Maryland, to social needs. So whether it's a food pantry or assistance with housing, that there is a person who is navigating them to that resource. So as a part of this, we've built out a resource directory of all the resources across the city, again, taking a unified approach, and we're sharing that with local partners so that, so that we're all on the same page in terms of what resources are available. But as a part of that, we have convened with the hospitals and meet with them regularly to get their feedback and input. So this is being adopted, again, across the city. We have up to 10 practices and hospitals who are, who are doing this work, and we're collecting that data, again, to also better understand what the needs of our residents are. And so far, actually, food is the greatest need with housing being next.
Again, thank you for your work, your partnership. Just the note I want to close on is, you know, as a councilperson, what I often see happen is when citizens, communities are feeling anxious and afraid, the thing that they reach for is police and harsher sentences and sort of this punitive approach that I think our city, Baltimore, has struggled to, has really struggled with. And what we've seen year over year over year as our police budget has increased is that it's not really working because the public safety outcomes in this town are not good. We need to really shift that mentality. It starts with us in really funding agencies like the Health Department to do the work that you need to do. And so, again, I would just push you to ask for more in, in your budget because it's really tough to stand in front of a group of community members who are feeling frightened, who are, who have been, in some cases, victims of violence, and say, "We need this preventive approach," when they don't see the evidence of it, right? Like they see, like to say, "We need to invest in youth trauma services" is really tough because it's not tangible. People want a police officer standing outside of their door, and we know that's not only not realistic, but it doesn't work. And so, I think just as a city, as a council, as a department, we just got to push because we need to change the way we're all thinking about these crises, whether it's opioids, whether it's violence. We really got to start getting at the root, and our budget currently does not reflect that. So again, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
And before we move to Councilwoman Snead, just on the same subject, yesterday we had Tisha Edwards here, which is now heading the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Successes, and they merged in that office, the Office of African-American Male Engagement. And I'm just letting you know this to, I think she would also be a good person to reach out to.
We're scheduled.
All right. You're, you're on it. So I just wanted to share that information. And was your comment connected to this?
Uh, I get back to you.
Oh, okay. I'll put you back on the list, and Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm just curious as to what areas you find that more people go to for services? Is it East Baltimore, West Baltimore, South Baltimore? Do we know?
And when you say services, like...
For anything that we offer.
That I don't know. I'd have to get back to you.
And, and I'm wondering if it's, it's that a, do they, do we know that data, though? Do we know it? Do we know how many people are coming in and what they're coming in for? Do we collect that?
So, so we do. I guess we, we maybe have to drill down and be more specific, like do you, are you speaking to like direct clinical services that we provide? Is it, you know, trainings that we provide? Is it education? So I might...
Guess I'm looking for a clinic medical.
So we have a clinic at 620 Caroline Street on the east side, and then we're on West North Avenue as well. So we serve 10,000 patients annually. Did you, you wanted to break down on...
I would be interested, yes.
Okay, we can get that for you.
Okay. And then my second question is, I know we pass laws a lot in reference to health, and I'm just wondering, for one specifically, I know a bill passed recently with smoking and a law changing. How do we get the word out about some of those things, about laws changing and making stores aware?
So the word out to the public? So we do have that Office of Chronic Disease Prevention that looks at things like smoking cessation. We are working to get the word out, and I'll, I'll maybe turn it over to Greg Cilio to speak to what we may be doing around that.
Madam Vice Chair, members of the committee, again, I'm Greg Cilio, I'm the Assistant Commissioner for Chronic Disease Prevention. Thank you, Madam Commissioner. So the state is very attuned to this as well, and we work very closely with the Maryland Department of Health to work through this. So they right now are working on putting together materials. You see when you go into stores, especially corner stores, stickers that used to say, you know, you have to be 18 to buy, they're going to be producing the 21 materials. So we're working with them to ensure that when people go and get their new licenses, that they're given those materials. But then we, as the Health Department, do education in stores ourselves. So we go out and do outreach. All of that outreach moving forward will include all the information regarding 21. So we interact with stores a lot, and, and it's, there's other pieces that touch stores, and we're going to be working through those outlets as well to make sure that those materials make their way.
How many people in your office do that type of work?
So we have two individuals that do education related to cessation and, and actually distribute, go into schools especially, and do education around smoking cessation. And then we have two part-time enforcement officers that go out and do the enforcement for underage sales. And then we have a couple of other employees that touch on healthy food access stuff, but they also, when they're in the field, do some education around smoking as well.
Okay. And my, my last question would be, how come we don't forward cases to the state's attorney's office for animal abuse?
Thank you for that question, Councilwoman. We report every confirmed case of animal abuse or neglect to the state's attorney's office. Animal abuse cases, very much like child abuse cases or cases of elder abuse, any kind of domestic violence, it usually happens behind closed doors. When we find the actual animal, it's really the animal's condition, the body condition that has to speak its own injuries, and of course, it can't in any way describe the circumstances of the injuries. Then sometimes those injuries are inconclusive. Because of that, we can't tell if it was from disease, an intentional infliction of harm, or an attack from another animal, for example. So those animals' bodies have to be analyzed, and when it is shown, and we can prove that it is abuse or neglect, that that's why the animal's in that condition, then it is forwarded to police for investigation, to the animal abuse unit. And we've been very successful, and then when there's sufficient evidence, it's sent to the state's attorney's office, evaluated and, and charged.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Slifer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I actually don't have any questions, which the committee will realize that that's a, that's a rarity, because normally I have like 50 questions for each agency. But the reason I don't have any questions for your agency is because your staff is extremely responsive and communicates effectively with the council, at least with my office, and I appreciate that. And so I want to also thank Mary Beth and your team for what you guys are doing up in my district involving, you know, some of the recent situations, just how professionally everything was handled, and also just how communicative you were with, you know, with myself and my team, just to keep us, you know, up to date on everything that was going on. So we certainly appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilman Stokes.
Good morning. In Baltimore City, you know, we have a food desert, and I'm concerned about the food desert, but about our seniors. So my first question is, what is the total cost of the senior meal program? For instance, the purchase of food and two, the management fees?
So I'll defer to Deputy Tan and Chief Financial Officer Green Haynes.
So the total, there are a couple of food programs. There's the home-delivered meal and the congregate meals, which is what you know as the eating together program. It's, we have about 58 sites across the city. We provide older adults about 550,000 meals annually. The breakdown, the breakdown of the meal program is a little bit over $2 million with all the state and federal grants for both congregate and home-delivered meals. The management fees that you're referring to is the actual management of the program, of the congregate meal program, and that is actually contracted out to MJM Innovations, and they receive about $547,000.
Okay, I have another question. How many vendors are used to supply the meals, and who are they?
There are multiple vendors. Traditionally, there is only one, but we worked very collaboratively with the Department of Planning to break it down into quadrants so that all of our older adults receive high-quality meals. I can't give you all of the vendors that are involved, but we have about four to five, including Meals on Wheels, movable, is it movable feast? But we could give you the full list, list of vendors if you'd like the breakdown.
And I believe you mentioned that the management service, just the service, is $500,000?
A little bit over, yes, sir.
That's just for the service? Has nothing to do with the food, the meals? That's just their fee?
That's the management of the...
Is there a reason why it's $500,000?
I think traditionally, it has always been a, a large portion of the meal program. It's to coordinate and manage all of the staff and volunteers that is involved in such a, such a large operation. Imagine it's managing basically 58 cafeterias across the city.
Is there any outcomes about this particular management company, how they doing in terms of repaying them $500,000 to manage, just to manage the service with the other vendors? Is there any record of...
Well, right now, in terms of tracking, in terms of performance measure, is the number of meals and the efficacy and the satisfaction of our residents after each meal. It has been, has improved significantly since we've changed the food vendors and have broken it down into quadrants across the city. I have to say that this contract is going out to bid next year in 2020, and we'll put a lot of parameters around outcome measures in this contract.
One moment question. How often do we issue RFPs for management of the food delivery service to our seniors?
I think this RFP process is every three years currently, but if Assistant Commissioner Maine can speak a little bit more about that. Is that correct?
Yes, the actual, thank you. The actual RFPs go anywhere from three years with one or two-year extensions based on funding availability or the ability to put the RFP back out on the road and sooner if necessary. So it, it's three years and then one, two, one-year extensions.
So my question is, how do, if it's two years, how do we evaluate that management company to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do in terms of managing other food service? Do we just give it back, give them the, I mean, do the RFP and they bid on it and get it again? Where the outcomes? Are they responsible for what they're supposed to be doing in terms of, if we paying them $500,000? That's a lot of money. That could be used for programming. I mean, why are we paying that kind of money to a company for $500,000?
Uh, Councilman Stokes, as, as again, the outcomes that we do measure is the number of meals that we provide annually as well as the satisfaction. There are rigid federal guidelines around the nutrition services that we need to provide to our older adults. We are looking at more of an outcome-based performance measure for the food delivery. Right now, it's all process, and I acknowledge the, the need to look at how effective this programming is, but we will put those parameters in the RFP process for 2020.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I have a question, and then we're back to you. What is the status on Healthy Starts expansion?
So I will defer to... So I will defer to maybe Rebecca Deneen, Assistant Commissioner.
You can come, okay. She can come up, she can come up to the podium.
And can you clarify when you say "expansion"?
Um, is, is there supposed to be an expansion of other Healthy Starts around the city?
So I know we, we received a cut in funding, but I'll let Rebecca speak to that.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Good morning. So Healthy Start is part of an overall initiative called Be More for Healthy Babies in the City, and has been an incredible part of it because they do a lot of the grassroots work in terms of connecting pregnant women into the city's central triage system and also home-visiting women who are at high risk. So they have had a major federal cut. Nearly half their funding was cut by the federal government.
Wow.
They're primarily funded through HERSA, through the, yeah, through HERSA. And unfortunately, it doesn't look like those dollars right now are going to be reinvested. However, we are working very closely with Healthy Start in terms of making sure that any of our grants are helping to support their staffing. What we don't want to see is any elimination of staffing, and, and so we're matching up our care coordination work and our home-visiting work with Healthy Start. The state of Maryland and the city of Baltimore took dollars that were Title V dollars, that were not oriented to Healthy Start, and we're reorienting some of those dollars. One of the big issues with Healthy Start is it's not through various machinations in the federal government and through Maryland Medicaid, through Maryland Department of Public Health. They're only taking evidence-based programs. They only fund evidence-based programs through certain parts of the government, and so Healthy Start, because it hasn't had a national evaluation, which was supposed to be happening, but then got underfunded, they're struggling a little bit with, how do you fund them when they don't have this evidence base? Well, we know, you know, at the city level, how much they locally contribute. But what we're committed to doing in the Bureau of Maternal and Child Health, though our funding also is getting cut, is to work as a team and make sure that we are covering the entire city with, with care coordination and home-visiting services to the extent we can.
So Finance Department, did you want to comment on this? Or...
I know that was a priority of Mayor Young, so we are working with the administration to find dollars within the fiscal 19 and 20 budget to get that funded.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Commissioner, so one of the things that I know is a focal point for the department is chronic disease prevention. I know that the agency put out a report back in 2015 that showed there were health disparities by neighborhood that separated life expectancy by almost 20 years, and the number-one cause of death was stroke, the number, or was a stroke, and I think, no, heart disease was number one, stroke was number three at the time. I'm guessing it's probably in that, that same order. Can you speak about the department's efforts to address this particular issue, that many of which these diseases are preventable? If we took talk about access to care or healthy food, can you talk about the work being done in the agency and any partnerships between BCPS and any adults, older adult-serving organizations that are nonprofit? Just sort of, you know, give us a lay of the land of, of what the department is being done and what gaps in care do, do you see needing to be filled to, to really address these preventable diseases in Baltimore City?
So I'll speak in generalities, and then I will turn it over to Assistant Commissioner Greg Cilio. But, but to your point, a lot of these diseases are preventable, and I don't think that, you know, our, our funding supports enough of a robust effort towards prevention and education around prevention, in addition to how do we improve access. So we certainly work with local partners to improve access, but, but I do think that, you know, with additional funding, we could do a lot more in terms of prevention and improved education for the community.
Councilman, thank you for your question. So I would say, so I've been in the position now as Assistant Commissioner for Chronic Disease Prevention for about three years, and during that time, we've really tried to focus in on what are the preventable behaviors? What are the drivers, especially in lower-income communities, for cardiovascular disease? Which, you know, so often, we focus on violence and the impact that that has, and, and violence as a major cause of death here in the city. Cardiovascular disease, as you pointed out, is the leading cause of death. So, you know, what can we do? What can we do around education? What can we do around programming that helps especially low-income people understand the impacts of things like being more active? And we recognize that part of the reason for those disparities is it's a lot harder to be active in neighborhoods in, let's say, West Baltimore than it is, and be outside and be active than it is, let's say, in South Baltimore. Also, food access. Again, the disparity being driven by the actual access to food, but in addition to behaviors that go along with healthy eating and sort of the cycles of, of, in low-income communities, people eating less healthy food and, and again, having less access to it. So we have a, a number of programs at the Health Department that we've implemented to address those various things. I mean, you know, especially when it comes to seniors, we have our virtual supermarket program, which works toward, you know, getting healthier food into buildings where especially seniors aren't able to get the transportation they need to get out to supermarkets. We have, we run the Cancer Coalition for the, for the city, which also focuses on tobacco use. So we're, the work that I, I mentioned earlier that we do as far as cessation work, we also have partners that we work with out in the community that do the work as well, and they also help coordinate various cancer screenings and such that we can get people connected to. But the, the issues are very large. I would say tobacco use in particular, I mean, we're seeing vaping, the rise of vaping right now, and tobacco use is going down, but if there's going to be a main driver, I would say tobacco use is among the things that we could, by reducing tobacco use, we could have the biggest impact. But as was said earlier, there are a lot of different initiatives out there. We're trying our best to coordinate those partners and bring everybody to the table to have the biggest impact possible. Resources, as always, are limited, but I think that, you know, we have our eye on that prize of those disparities, and I think figuring out what are those items, and especially healthy eating, tobacco, and active living are things that are the biggest drivers, and getting that messaging out is important, and you all, as councilmembers, have been extremely helpful in that. And our Billion Step Challenge, which we ran last year, I mean, councilmembers were, were really, really great in helping us get that messaging out and getting people to participate.
And can you speak to the role that you, or part of your partnerships with, so you mentioned healthy eating, exercise, tobacco. What's the relationship with Baltimore City's schools? I know one of the things I hear from young people a lot is concerns about the quality of lunches and, and access to healthy snacks during the day. And often we'll see, I, I see this personally in my neighborhood, where students are, like, leaving the building to go get other stuff because the lunches aren't, aren't great. And it's sort of a other, create some other public safety challenges for the kids when they are leaving the building. Can you, do you, do you play any role advising that? I mean, I'm not, not that it's your role to provide the healthy lunches, but would, would partnerships exist, if any, and as well as with Wreckin' Parks as well, when we, we think about the healthy lifestyle? I think a lot of these things start young. Not that, you know, we, we shouldn't be focused on adults, but if we can change behaviors and really create sort of a generational change with, with Gen Z right now, can you just speak to that a little bit?
Sure.
If, would partnership exist? And, and I guess also, are there areas that would be appropriately expanded? Are there things that you would like to do more with these other agencies that aren't happening right now?
Yeah. So we, we do have close partnerships with both schools and Wreckin' Parks. We do have regular conversations, and we are sort of more at advisory role. I would say, and I'm not sure if planning, has planning had their hearing yet? Holly Freistat is our, is our city's foods czar. So Holly really focuses on the policy side and really works a lot with the various entities that are procuring food vendors and things. So Holly really focuses on that a lot, but we work with Holly regularly, and we work with those other entities. And, and Wreckin' Parks, I mean, you know, I, I remember I met with the new director right around the time that Billion Step was launching, and, and we, they were a close partner on that and getting that messaging out there. We had a number of events throughout that year that they participated in, and, but we do play an important advisory role in, in sort of sharing the knowledge base of the Health Department and the public health knowledge that we bring to the table and making sure that that gets implemented in their day-to-day. You know, everyone is sort of working against resources, but I think we, you know, we do a good job of coordinating, and there's, and there's certainly a lot of that happening.
And my last question, Madam Chair. Can you speak about the efforts around maternal health and maternal care? I know that the agency does a lot around for healthy babies. The maternal mortality rate is still high in Baltimore City, but I, I know that there's been some successful efforts from the agency over the years to, to really drive that down. Can you speak about that work?
Sure. I'll speak in generalities, and then if there's anything Assistant Commissioner Deneen wants to add. So this past legislative session, we did advocate, along with other partnered local health departments, around a maternal mortality review board. So that will be starting in the fall, and that will look specifically at the disparities related to race and maternal mortality that we see. So similar to our child fatality review and our infant mortality review, we'll be looking at what are the differences based on race, based on socioeconomic status, and how do we, as a coalition, make recommendations for addressing those disparities? So again, that will be a multidisciplinary team that will include healthcare providers, as well as community partners and other civic agencies to better address those disparities that we're seeing.
The maternal mortality rate is primarily in Maryland because of opioid disorders. So unlike what we're seeing in infant mortality, where we've seen a 38% decrease in infant mortality in the last 10 years, which is a reversal of a trend that was going up prior to that, with maternal mortality, the opioid crisis has really affected things. So when we look at that, I, I think that death review is going to be fundamentally important to figure out what are the ways in which we can prevent those deaths. We've seen an increase in substance-exposed newborns, but they are not, those are not deaths. So while we see an increase in those numbers, we're not seeing that as an increase in the, in the infant mortality rate. But we are really looking forward to having maternal mortality as part of our work, just understanding also that Be More for Healthy Babies is actually a life course approach, and a lot of that work has to do with maternal health, and you're not going to have, be able to make these reductions without really focused a lot on the preconception health and on the maternal health in general of the city.
Does any other councilmembers have any further questions? Do you have a final comment?
Yes. I did. I wanted to add one thing. For Councilman Burnett, you asked some of the work we're doing around substance use disorder, and I forgot to mention that we, in partnership with Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore, through funding from the city as well as the state, have stood up a Baltimore Crisis Stabilization Center that is geared, and that was April of 2018 was when that was first stood up, and that will be actually in Councilman Bullock's district. So we are completely redoing the Hebrew Orphan Asylum to serve as the location for this Baltimore Crisis Stabilization Center. That's meant to serve city residents, but, but will certainly be available to the state. So so far, we've already been partnering with local hospitals who refer patients to us if they meet criteria. And the criteria is based on, this is a person who may have had a non-fatal overdose, and they're medically stable enough to go to the stabilization center. While at the stabilization center, they have access to healthcare, so there's a nurse practitioner on site. There's also care coordination, so that that person, once they're discharged, usually within a 24-hour period, is followed for a period of 30 days, and they're provided with these wraparound and support services.
Thank you.
Commissioner, thank, thank you.
I think I have one more.
Go ahead.
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry. You go right ahead.
So another initiative that we've had going for a couple of months is something called our Levels of Care, where my chief medical officer is working with local healthcare institutions to rate them and their level of care. So this will be around the level of services that they can provide to residents with substance use disorder. So, so for instance, if they can start medication-assisted treatment in their emergency department, they're a certain level of care. If they have access to referral services on site, then they're ranked another level of care. So I just wanted to highlight that, too.
Thank you. On behalf of the council, we thank you, Commissioner, and your team and staff for continuing to serve and give help to the, our residents and constituents in Baltimore City, and all of the private-public partnerships that you continue to work with, and the grants that you apply for, and we here on the council notice everything, and we're also here to help and, and work with you. And please continue to give us information. As you get information, we are advocates for our communities, and we'd like to share the, the needs of, you know, the, the help that you can give as well. We are all here to help you. So we can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
We now are in recess until 11:00 a.m., and we have homeless services.